Started, if everyone's ready. So, I'd like to call this meeting of January 23rd to order at 5:37 PM. And will the Secretary please call roll call?
Eric Alderedi.
Here.
Phil Becerra.
Here.
Cynthia Contreras-Lio.
Yeah.
Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Beatrice Mendoza.
Here.
Kenneth Nguyen.
Yeah.
Lynette Verino.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a form.
Thank you. Will you all please stand and join me for the pledge allegiance? Ready, begin.
The pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does a member of the public have any public comments on any non-agenda items? That'd be any items that are not on the agenda, if you'd like to speak on them, now would be the time. No, okay. Thank you. So, our next item is the consent calendar, and the first, um, first item, business consent calendar, do you have, do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Have a second? A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay, we're gonna move on to the business calendar. The first item on the business calendar is the commissioner, communication disclosure. Do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to items on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing. And this is the time and place for the public hearing on item number 2016-03 and amendment application 2016-03 for the Rate Street Park. If you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak for him with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. The action of the planning commission is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the San Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning department within 10 days from the date of the commission's action or unless set for public hearing by the city council. Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. This item was presented to you, um, January 9th. At that time, the commission did request that the item be continued to this meeting as the request for additional information. I've had created a PowerPoint with some additional information. So just to give you a background history, um, the US government, um, more or less deed Centennial Park to the city of San Ana in 1969. At that time, the deed did have some use restrictions, which limited the park to be utilized strictly for park purposes. In 1979, the city leased a portion to the college, to the Santiago, to Rancho Santiago Community College District. And at that time, they also received a 30-year lease agreement, which was approved by the Department of Interior. In 2009, after the 30-year lease agreement was about to expire, the city granted an additional five-year extension for, to allow the park to remain. At that time, um, just to give you a quick fact, the Department of Interior had regulated, the regulatory agency's powers to the National Park Services. So there was a shift in the regulatory agency in charge of interpreting these use restrictions. And at that time, the National Park Services informed the city that they were currently in violation of this grant deed restriction. Again, the uses were basically for recreational uses and the Santiago Community College was utilizing a portion of the site, which is 2.6 acres of the site, um, for educational purposes, which again was in violation of the deed. In 2014, the city granted an additional five-year extension to the Rancho Santiago Community College District, um, as the college at that time had informed the city that they had an interest for a long-term lease agreement with the city. The National Parks Services was informed about this request and basically denied that request. They told the city that the Rancho Community College District had to, 2019, at the end of the, um, extension, to either vacate the premises or comply with a conversion plan. So in 2015, the city signed an agreement with Rancho Community College District to work on a conversion plan. Basically, the conversion plan, um, is requiring 2.6 acres of land to be allocated at a different location in the city, um, which will then carry those restrictions to those additional sites. At that time, um, the city in 2015 did, um, select three sites that comply with the conversion plan. And that one particular site, the first one was the Pacific Electric Park, which is at the corner of McFadden and Orange. The second, um, property was identified, which is at the, looking at the crossing street of Sixth Street and Lacy. And the subject properties that we're currently talking about right now, which are the ones on Rate Street, are the last three, um, properties selected under that conversion plan in order to comply with this requirement. So that pretty much concludes my presentation. Uh, feel free to more, and if you have any question, I'll be free to answer them. I, we also have Ron O'Noe from the Parks and Recreational Agency present today, as well as Sylvia from the CDA Agency that can answer any questions if you have relating to the transaction of land, or if you have any more questions related to the conversion of, uh, the conversion plan for these properties.
Any other questions?
Again, the planning division is recommending that the city, um, that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve general plan amendment number 2016-03 and approve amendment application 2016-03.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll start from the end. Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are six sites that are related to this land conversion plan, correct?
There's three sites.
Three sites?
Correct.
So we've got, we've got for Centennial, there's three sites that would fulfill this land conversion?
The 2.6 acres, correct.
Okay, and, and have those other two been developed into park space already?
The, I believe the Pacific Electric Park is currently in the process of being developed. The other, um, the Sixth Street and Lacy, that came to the, um, to the planning commission last year for a zone change, they have not been developed as parks yet.
But, but, so the site before us today and the two sites that you just referenced would fulfill this land conversion?
Correct, it will fulfill that obligation. It will comply with the 2.6 acres.
Okay, thank you.
In excess, actually, a little bit more than those.
Commissioner Contreras-Lio?
This is the first time I hear there's other properties, um, that could fulfill this obligation. What's around Sixth and Lacy?
I'm sorry, those properties were already identified, so it, they're in addition to this property.
So all three you need to satisfy?
Correct, the conversion plan, the obligations of the National Park Services.
What was the acreage that needs to be?
2.6 acres. And the other properties have already gone through a zone change and general plan amendment.
Oh, I thought you said one of them still had not changed zone.
This one, the Rate property, the one we're speaking on behalf today.
Oh, yes, I understand that I was talking about the Sixth and Lacy.
No, that one has already been processed for, um, open space. Has not been developed yet as open space, but in terms of the process, the zone change and the general plan have already been approved.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Alderedi?
So, yeah, thank you. There's, we've got three properties, are we limited to those three? Are there other properties that could come, become available in the future that would qualify towards the 2.6?
Correct, so in addition to the site selection, um, or the conversion plan, there is a criteria for site selection that's identified briefly as the evaluation criteria. I didn't want to go too much in depth into that, I'll let Ron kind of speak to that in terms of what the actual criteria selection for these properties were. Um, but just to kind of give you a brief idea in terms of what the requirement were, number one, they had to satisfy, um, the fair market value, which was a challenge for the city. Um, so we had to actually purchase these properties at market rate. That was one of the requirements. The second requirement, um, these, these properties have to satisfy the same service population in area, so in a sense, the same demographics, and that was also a challenge that Parks and Rights had difficulties in, in identifying. And the third one was basically a viable recreational area, just to make sure that it's appropriate in size and it's located in the area that its park was efficient. But in terms of selecting, I'll let Ron speak on behalf of that.
Okay, just, just to follow up in that regard, my question was, are we limited to these three, or are there future properties that could satisfy the 2.6?
This, these properties will satisfy the acres, but he collaborate on that.
And just to give you additional background on this thing, um, these Parks and Recreation originally identified, as you indicated earlier, about six, six sites. And, uh, those other sites included Memory Lane, uh, the Rescue Mission Site, a property adjacent to Chappers Park, and, uh, and the old well property at Figueroa Street, that's four of the sites, in addition to the PE Park Site. In, in that analysis, we couldn't meet, those other four sites could not meet some of the conditions. As, as he indicated, the conditions were the area needs to be void of park sites, uh, the acquiring the sites has to be from a willing seller, uh, purchase of those sites had to be at appraised value or lower. And, um, this, uh, and the site should, uh, should not be, that already designated as a future site. Well, the Memory Lane Site was already designated, so we had to cross that out. And, and the Rescue Mission was close, close to a park site, so we crossed that out. The, the Chappers Park is adjacent to a park site, so we had to actually eliminate that. And the Figueroa Site was also close to Centenita Park, so we had to eliminate that. So, so to meet all these conditions, a willing seller, the appraised value, and, and the, and a site that's in an, in an area that's void of park site, we had to find that, and the easiest way to find that was, was through these sites. Since CDA Housing already owned the site, we had a willing seller, we were acquiring it at, at the fair market value, and it was in the area that's void of open space. That's how those sites were actually selected. We still need to go through a process with the National Park Service. We've already submitted the names, we haven't submitted all the documentation. The documentation includes environmental, the land appraiser, a soils test, um, recreational needs, recreational analysis to make sure that they're compatible. And, and once the National Park Service and the, and the GSA approves it, then we can do the conversion.
Okay, so, so as to the six, the six properties that you've mentioned, there's no way, is there a way that that six can grow beyond six? So are we stuck in time?
In, in, in order to meet the conversion requirement, it has to be of equal value. In other words, we had to do a land appraisal of the college site, a land appraisal of these other, these other sites, and they had to be of equal value. They also had to be of equal size or more, you know, so that was the difficult thing that we had to go through. That's why initially we had a lot of sites identified, and then now we narrowed it down to these, actually three sites, that, the, uh, the Pacific Electric Park Site and these two sites that you're considering.
So I guess my question is, is it a finite, finite number of sites? That six can't grow to seven?
It can grow, it can grow, as long as it's more than the acreage that we're converting with.
Right, okay.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
A couple of questions. Are all the parks in San Ana national, uh, under the National Park Services?
No, only Centennial.
Pardon?
Only Centennial. Well, I take that back, it's, Centennial is the only one that's under the National Park Service requirement.
Right.
There are other sites, though, that are under, they are under state requirement. The reason why they are under state requirements is because of, we obtained grant, grants from those states that made it a condition of that site, that that site be in perpetuity and open space.
So the uniqueness of the Centennial Park is that it's under National Park Services?
That's right.
As opposed to all the other parks in the city are either in compliance with state grants or city parks?
That's, you're absolutely right. And, and we acquired Centennial Park, um, actually through a, um, uh, land surplus from the, from the Department of Interior. Actually, it was free of charge, it was...
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm familiar, because I was on the board when this whole thing was going on with Rancho, so, um, the question I guess I have between either you or Jerry is that, you know, today's Centennial Education Center is considered to be out of compliance with the federal government. What, where are they out of, what is their non-compliance?
Well, you know, they're actually not in, out of compliance, they're actually still within the five-year lease requirement, so they're still, but they, but they either need to vacate the site within the end of five years. And the five years actually expires November 2019.
Right.
Okay, so they have to actually, actually have to vacate it, or we have to do a land conversion with that site.
Right, so when you do the land conversion, and you, let's just say we have these three sites that you've talked about, Pacific, Sixth and Rate, and they become, they will then be National Park Service property?
Now, then, what happens then is the deed restrictions of that property that we acquired from the National Park Service, which says for recreational purposes only?
Right.
That deed restriction then shifts to the other three park sites.
Correct, so the new parks become, they will now become part of the National Park Service?
That's correct.
And they will be, the guidelines and the restrictions as to what you can have in that park and what you can do with that park are going to be the same, if not similar, to what is currently being held, which Centennial Park is being held to?
That's correct.
Okay, so, in some respects, the city doesn't have control over what goes into that park, it's federal government, it's the federal government that's controlling.
The city, the city has control as long as it's of recreational improvements.
Yes, yes.
You can't put a school, you can't build a concessions, uh, session, or you can't sell it for housing, or you can't, so, but it has to be for recreational purposes only.
And, and there's a definition within the parks, the National Park Services as to what is considered recreational?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, I think that's good for now, but I'll come back later.
Thank you. Commissioner Nguyen, did you have anything? Commissioner Mendoza?
I just have one question about the development of the McFadden and Orange. When was that approved?
Uh... You talking about the purchase of the property, or?
Uh, you meant, that was one of the ones that you mentioned, McFadden and Orange?
Yeah, that's, that site was acquired some time ago, I'd say, um, March of 2013.
And what's the status with that, or are they still a part of the?
Actually, that, when that was submitted, uh, the National Park Service actually approved that site, even though it wasn't sufficient amount of land. They approved it so that we can continue on with our process. And we've already completed plans and specs, we've already went out to bid, and we're about ready to award possibly at the next council meeting.
Commissioner Becerra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Godenas High School is located in Centennial Park.
Yes.
And the, the site that's, um, requiring us to do this land conversion plan is also an educational facility?
No, the, the, Godenas is completely different. What happened in there is, remember, it's gotta be of recreational value or purposes. So what we did with Godenas is we talked to the school district and we've indicated all the recreational portion of the school is on Centennial, all the educational portion is on the school site.
Right.
So that's why all the athletic fields, the gymnasium, the performing arts, all is on the park site.
Right.
And, and the classrooms are on the south side of Centennial.
So none of the academic buildings are located on Centennial Park?
No.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The, the south, the south end of Centennial Park, the Heritage Museum and Godenas are San Ana Unified School District property.
Okay.
And, and Mitchell, Mitchell is a school that's on there too.
And they, they acquired that the same way we did, except in, in their acquisition process was through the Department of Education, and it needs to be for educational purposes only.
Right, okay.
Commissioner Contreras-Lio?
Could you review the acreage that Sixth and Lacy and Pacific have?
The acres of what?
The property.
The, the three properties? Yeah.
Well, we know 1.1 is for Rate, how about the other two?
I have it right here. There it is. The, the Sixth and Lacy property is 0.43 acres, the Raiding Myrtle is 1.01 acres, and the, uh, McFadden Orange Site is 1.4 acres, which totals 2.84 acres.
And how about the Pacific?
The Pacific Electric, that's the 1.4 acres.
Oh, so the Pacific is McFadden and Orange?
Yeah.
Yeah, Pacific is McFadden, uh, is, the Pacific is Orange and McFadden.
Okay. And my other question is, how long have we gone without meeting the obligation of...
Well, like I indicated, they're, they're still, they're still within the requirements because they've got their five-year lease.
No, no, no. The, I'm sorry, the obligation to find the acreage to be in compliance, to say, okay, now we're even because of what we took. So how long has that obligation not been met?
I, I'm not quite sure I follow what your question is.
Since, since, let's say the education center got placed at Centennial Park, how long ago was that?
That's what's...
The issue, I think the answer to that is, is that the first 30 years of that lease was, was education. Rancho's had the continuing education center for over 30, over 35, 35, 36 years.
Since, yeah, 1979.
And, and it's just, it's just in the last 10 years, or last since 9, since 2009, that the federal government came back and said, you need to, you need to either be in compliance for Centennial, or you, or you need to find property and do this land swap. That's the, that's the diff, that, that's what Rancho's compliance is, because...
Okay.
But originally, the, the original 30-year lease was approved by the Department of Interior.
Right.
And, uh, and then, then, and the Department of Interior then gave the regulatory, the National Park Service the requirement to, uh, provide the regulatory agency for the site, and that's when they were surprised that Department of Interior approved it. But that's why we got the five-year, five-year.
So Ron, it wasn't until we, until we exhausted that 30-year lease, um, or the, the 30-year lease with Rancho, that we had to go back when we gave them the extension, and now it was National Parks, and they said, oh, wait a minute, you're, you're not in compliance. Up until that point, we didn't even know, because we had approval from the Department of Interior.
That's, that's correct.
And, and the district, the district requested 30 years, and the federal government said 10, and then they came back and said, but the 10 has to be five and five. And so that's how they, that's how they, that's how it's gone.
So on our second extension, and we have, the requirement is that we need to have the parks up and running by 2019.
The requirement is that we have up to 2019 to either get this whole conversion process completed, or the college needs to move out.
So the parks don't necessarily need to be completely ready to, to go by 2019, just as long as the conversion plan is, the deal is sealed?
That's correct.
Between the city and the properties?
Right.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Alderedi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you've, you've mentioned that three criteria that are used to sort of make this determination. Where are those three criteria? Is that in the conversion plan?
It's, it's in a, yeah, it's in the National Park Service conversion guidelines, and actually, it's more than those three criteria, I just gave you the basics.
The, the major ones?
Right.
And so tho, those are binding on the city because they're a federal regulation that, that we must follow in order to be in accord with the NPS?
Yes.
Okay. One of the, one of the things I've been trying to struggle with is I've heard the, the use of the phrase, this, we're required to do this, and that's what I'm trying to get my head around, is if we're required to designate this 1.1 acres, um, and transform it to open space, um, is that a fair statement? Is it a mandate? Do we have to do it? If we don't do it, what are the ramifications? Are there other properties that could satisfy this? Or is it the 2019 date that's pushing us into this?
The, the 2019 date is what's pushing the priority on getting this thing done as fast as we can. The, uh, these two sites, these last two sites are the last sites that would possibly meet that requirement, although we still need National Park Service to approve all the documentation that's to be submitted. We can eat, we can pick another site, but again, remember, you've got a...
Do you have another site?
No, we don't.
Right, okay.
We don't.
There's no other questions? I appreciate it, thank you, Ms. Toronto.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any questions of CDA before I open the public hearing? Okay.
Let me just ask one question.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
So, Jerry, just, just to, to clarify, the out of compliance situation with Rancho Centennial Education Center is that it is an education center on a National Park?
That's correct.
So, anything that has to do with education, or not has to do with education, but has some involvement from an education perspective, would not be qualifier?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then just to understand, I think Ron kind of spoke on this, and he touched it pretty well, um, before the National Park Services, the regulatory agency was the Department of Interior, so when that shift occurred, there was some misinformation for transaction that happened, and then the National Park Services at this point is, you're in violation of that restriction.
And, and the other thing for clarification is the fields, because that's what, that's what Commissioner Becerra was talking about, the, the fields that are there are under joint use between the city and the school district? Okay, so they're, it's a joint use agreement as to how that's set up, because in the beginning, when Godenas was built, the fences were around the campus and you couldn't have any joint use, and now it's joint use with the city for the fields. The education center, Godenas High School itself, is on San Ana Unified School District property, and, and so too is the parking garage. And then what's in the front, which is Centennial Education Center, is out of compliance, and that's the only thing that's on there that's not in compliance.
That's correct, it's only the 2.6 acres.
Thank you. Okay, have we received any written communications on this item, Madam Secretary? Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is now open, I have several speaker cards. I just want to remind, uh, the public that, uh, your comments, if you will be speaking, are limited to three minutes. And, uh, the lights, the green light will indicate that you're still within your three minutes, the yellow light will indicate that your time is coming up, and red will mean that your three minutes is up. So if the light turns red, please wrap up your comments. Does anyone else have any other speaker cards? Please bring them up to, to our secretary. I'll go ahead and call them in the order that I receive them. The first speaker, um, I'm not sure, there's three names on here, so if you could select a, maybe one speaker, Urban Agriculture, I have Juan Jose Armeriza. Unless each of you would like to speak, I need a, a separate card from each of you. Hi, can you speak into the, the microphone, just tell us your name?
Um, my name's Jose Arguello.
What was that?
Jose Arguello.
Can you spell your last name? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jose Arguello, and I am here to talk to you about this traumatized experience growing up, uh, in our, in my apartment complex within the city of Santana. The apartments did not allow me much space for us, for me, to be active for a healthy life, within the lack of space provided. We once acci, uh, we, we and some other youth accidentally threw a ball over to a house near our, um, our apartment complex. We asked politely to retrieve our ball, but they responded... We asked politely to retrieve our ball, but they responded back by threatening to calling the police. After some minutes later, asked again to have our ball back, but didn't and called the police. On us, once the police got there, the younger youth, um, which is me and some other youth, left to hide frightened of fear, of fear, as the other youth explained the incident to the police. Once we got, uh, our ball back, some of us were a bit frightened, frightened, and did not plug as mu, play as much anymore. This is why us youth ask you to provide this mandatory space for others to not live this traumatizing experience. Thank you.
Thank you. There's also a few names on this next speaker card, so if one of you would like to, to represent, I think it's S-A-H-N-A, and that would be either Annie, Maddie, or Josh.
We have three of the cards.
Okay. So, who would be speaking on this card? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do I start?
Can you just-
Okay, so, good evening. My name is Annie Tran. And we are the Santa Ana Health and Nutrition Advocates. We are a youth team, part of a youth empowerment network at KidWorks, dedicated to advocating a healthier lifestyle to improve the well-being of our community. We are here today to support the work of the youth for active and safe communities, and believe that having more open space, parks, and skate parks will impact our community for the better, making it a healthier place for all. Currently, we are working on developing a survey to assess the health needs of our community. In our meetings, we have identified many different areas of need around health, including diabetes, obesity, food insecurity, and mental and emotional health. There are many different areas of health, but we've realized that they are all connected to one another, and this includes having more open space and parks. So, I think that these parks will do us good, because it provides a place for youth to be outside, be active, and build relationships. And that is all.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Hey, a speaker card for Marcos Rodriguez.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marcos Rodriguez. I am also from the Youth Empowerment Network, and I'm here to say that we also need more spaces, because the youth, we want the youth to be in a healthy, active, safe and secure place. I, along with many of my friends, live in apartment complexes, and the struggle with that is that we have, like, limited space to run around and play outside, and sometimes we get in trouble for the smallest reasons. Most of them, because children run around the streets and cars are passing by, and that causes a little bit of drama. And many, many of my friends resort to biking and skateboarding to travel around Santa Ana, and I myself biked here to city council, and it was kind of rough, really rough, because usually the cars zoom by next to me, it knocks the wind out of me sometimes. But you, you know, I really wanna, I want, like, safe streets around Santa Ana. Yeah, and because of this reason, many people say, like, this discourages me from, like, riding around the city, because of how dangerous it is and, like, how secure they feel in Santa Ana. The youth of, of Santa Ana, they want more safe and secure spaces to be physically active, socially connected, and mentally healthy. Without appropriate, safe and secure, open spaces, we are at greater risk of obesity, because we started a house, Monchao, and we have, like, other chronic diseases. As a prevented, preventative measure, we ask to have more open spaces for the youth, and in the future, investing more public land for recreational purposes. Currently, our faces are lax, uh, open spaces for the community, such as parks, and all existing, like, big parks that I know of is Centennial Park, and that's even five miles away from my house, which is too far for me, and by the time I get home, it's already over dark. This is why I ask you today to provide more open spaces for our community residents to live in more active, healthy lives, um, healthy life. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Maria Rovalkava.
Good evening. My name is Maria Rovalkava, and I'm with the youth, I am the Youth and Community Engagement Coordinator for Active Transportation in the Youth Empowerment Network Program at KidWorks. I am here today to express my support for the rezoning of the parcels to be parks and recreational spaces. As a Santa Ana native, I have witnessed firsthand the hardships of my family and friends to go through the lack of open space. Many Santa Ana residents need open green spaces for healthier and more active life. Much of the population of our city lives in confined spaces, such as apartments or rent rooms, making it tough for them to go outside and enjoy the fresh air and relaxing time with their families. We are well aware of the lack of open space in our city. In our city, in fact, it is one of the most park, park-poor cities in the U.S., with only 1.6 acres of park space per every 1,000 residents, in comparison to Irvine, which has 37 acres of park space per every 1,000 residents. The youth and I are advocating for safe alternatives for recreation instead of resorting to gangs, drugs, and violence. Many oppose skate parks, believing that they will lead to a rise in crime in the area. But within three years after opening the, um, the Michael K. Green Skate Park in 2003, the city of Long Beach saw a drug-related incidence drop 60.9 percent, violent crime dropped 29.3 percent, and overall incidents dropped 22.8 percent. Calls for service dropped 23 percent. Today, I ask that you invest in youth programs and recreational spaces, such as creating partnerships between the schools and city for dual usage of available facilities, as well as designate available empty parcels into spaces that will benefit the community, such as green parks, skate parks, recreational centers, and open fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next speaker will be Lynette Guzman.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lynette. I'm a resident of Santa Ana. I've been living here my entire life. I'm also a Commissioner on the Parks and Recreation Department, but today I'm speaking on behalf of as a resident. I'm also here in support of rezoning the rate lots of the rate street space as parking and open space. I think this is a valuable asset to the community. The area has a lack of access to open space and parks. The community is standing here before you request this, so it's also an opportunity to listen to the community that lives or works in that area, because they know it better than anybody else, and they know what their community can really benefit and what it really needs. Parks really are there to help everybody reap the benefits of exercise and recreation from youth who need a place to just, you know, play soccer, or talk with their friends, to seniors who just like, you know, taking a few walks around the, the, the space. And families, too. They also need the space. So, that's why I'm here, standing. I became a Commissioner because I really wanted to advocate, as a resident, for opportunities, and I see this one as a great opportunity for the community that's requesting it here with, that's standing here today. So, I support that, that lot, that rate street to be a, um, open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Isuri Ramos.
Good evening, Chair Barino, and Planning Commission, Planning Commission members. My name is Isuri Ramos. I'm a resident here of Santa Ana, and I'm also the community organizer for the Kennedy Commission, and today I'm here to speak in support of changing the general plan and zoning designation of these parcels from residential to open space. So, as you've already heard, Santa Ana is one of the most park-poor cities in the United States, with only 1.6 acres of, of park space for every 1,000 residents. And while the Kennedy Commission advocates for affordable housing and housing, we also recognize the benefits that parks bring to the community. So, these sites were designated for housing, and as the city purchases, purchases them from the Housing Authority at fair market value, that money will go back to the housing asset fund, so we'll still be able to build housing elsewhere. Today, I say you move forward with staff's recommendation, and as you do this, you'll be supporting open space. You'll be bringing more much-needed, much-needed space and parks to the community, while still supporting our housing efforts. So, I ask that you also stand with the community and work with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Edwin Ruiz.
Hi, good evening. My name is Edwin Ruiz, and I am from the Youth Empowerment Network, and I am here to express my support on open parks and recreational space. I am here to share my experience about the necessity of more park space, because over the past sixteen years, I have lived in apartments which didn't allow children to play in a, in the apartment complex, and they still don't. So, they had to resort and stay inside and play video games all day. In my case, growing up, I liked skating, and due to no space in my area, I have to skate on the sidewalks and on private property, such as my school. This is dangerous, because I have fallen multiple times, and my skateboard ends up on the street, and I have to risk getting it back while cars are passing, which can run me over. That's why I ask you today to create more open, open parks, and hopefully, others won't have to go through what I go through. Thank you.
Thank you. My next speaker is Michelle Suniga.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Suniga, and I'm a researcher from University of California, Irvine, and I'm here to request more open space for the residents of Santa Ana, due to the lack of sufficient park space that exists in the area. Not only are parks requested for their association with increased physical activity and decreased body mass index for nearby residents, but also because they help alleviate mental stress by serving as spaces for residents to engage with nature while being in the urban environment. Though some may believe that parks only induce crime and drug use, studies have shown that parks can do just the opposite. With adequate design, strategic implementation, and community planning participation, parks can develop into tremendous community assets that work to deter crime and drug use. In moving forward with the possible implementation of parks, UCI and our partnering youth at KidWorks hope you would also consider placing a skate park at one of the potential park spaces, considering there is a large skating community and only one skate park in the city. Skate parks are known to provide opportunities for skill acquisition, personal development, and social cohesion. A skate park would also provide a place for skaters to skate freely, without worry of a complaint being made against them. Thank you for considering the zoning change. We hope you can provide more parks for the residents, especially since it has been raised as a priority for residents of Santa Ana. Once zoning change is decided, UCI and the youth at KidWorks are able and willing to contribute to the planning process, and also research as well, of a safe and easily accessible park for all in Santa Ana. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Leon Jacobs.
My name is Leon Jacobs. I reside at 2314 Westbrook Streets, and I've been there for fifty years. Good evening. I just first got wind, just first got wind of this at 2:30 today, so I have, I'm not really sure of how much I can give you, especially with that time limit. This, I'm with the Bella Vista Neighborhood Association. I have Central City, I have, which this is in, Mid-City, New Horizon, all in my, I speak to these people. And being at this juncture for fifty years, looking at this entire area, we, you got some situations which are pretty demanding. I want to address you all on that. It's, um, one is, you got a, a situation where your Proposition 50, 47, Proposition 57, the Marijuana Initiative that just went through, and you just put in a sanction, a sanctuary, the city, and you got a situation where you don't have enough police coverage for this area. This area that we're talking about has gangs, two gangs. They go from one side of the city to the other. I'm, I'm afraid that this area is going to create a bastion for crime, for crime. Myself, fifty years, I've known this area, I know there, there was, in, on that particular property, there was two houses that were there. They both burned down. I know that. So, it bothers me that that has happened, and you want to put this in. So, all I say is, I want, I'm looking forward toward the children and the situation of marijuana usage, which is going to impede, is going to impede our area for memory, learning, disabilities, and the last one is visual perception. It impairs visual depth perception, and you can't have that with children that are going to actually do something which is beneficial to the city. And our city is education first.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Grace Aguilar.
Good evening. My name is Graciela Aguilar, Grace Aguilar. I'm also not fully prepared for this meeting, but I, I heard about it earlier today, and I'm a pre-licensed therapist at Child Guidance Center here in Santa Ana, and I've, I was raised in Santa Ana. I'm right across the street from the rate lot that is being spoken of here tonight, and my experience growing up has been of having the, the values inside the home. So, I'm here letting you know that, that I advocate for the youth and for them having a free space, a safe free space for them to be able to address those traumas that they've probably engaged. However, I also want to raise the concerns on, on, share the concerns on behalf of our neighbors, both. There's only three, three houses across that lot, and I'm here on behalf of them, speaking to raise the concern of the currently existing problems of drug. So, yes, I'm very proud of the youth here tonight that are here voicing their needs, and I think that they're very important. However, I think that before we do provide that space, we need to make sure that it's going to be the safe environment that we want our kids to grow in. And as it stands right now, there's a high activity of, of drugs. There's been times where my sister, who has the window facing the Myrtle Street, has heard, um, of events of domestic violence, and we've called the, the police, and the police has not been able to assist those situations. So, you know, I am in support of the youth having that open space. However, I am here to raise that concern. I don't know that, that that area is the safest for our youth at this point, so that's all.
Thank you. Maritza, or Quisa? I'm sorry if I spelled, pronounced your last name wrong.
Hello, my name is Maritza Guisa. Having escaped-
Having skate parks built more is important because it will help avoid kids all ages from off the streets and doing bad like drugs, smoking, drinking, and criminal activities and harming the future. Instead, they will be more focused in having fun and being active more. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Josue Cruz.
Hello, my name is Josue Cruz. I'm from Santa Ana Health and Nutrition Advocates. It's important to have skate parks because it helps people with their mental and emotional health. Thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker, Karla Jose Bustamante.
Hello, my name is Jose Bustamante. I am from Santa Ana Health and Nutrition Advocates. It is important to have skate parks because it has the Santa Ana help, the Santa Ana residents would be more active and live a healthier lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other speakers, then that's going to conclude the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back for any Commissioner comments, questions, and possibly motion. Michelle already?
I just had a question of staff. You know, a number of speakers came up here and talked about using this as a, as a skate park. And the zone changes for, or is, and the amendment for open space, is a skate park open space? And, and if so, would the NPS deem that that's open space or park space?
Right now, I think the, the student mentioned it as a generic issue. There will be public community meetings that would address the use, but skate parks are open space.
They are open space.
Well, I mean, for all intent purposes, the only skate park that is in the city is in Centennial Park.
Which is an MPS.
And that's under the National Park Services.
That's not that far away.
So it's the only, it's the only park that has a skate park. So it would, it would lead you to believe that you could have a skate park in any of these three parks, because it's, it would be, it would be within compliance.
There will be, but we need to emphasize that at this point, the type of park that will be designed there will be determined after community meetings take place. We hear from the neighborhood in terms of what they want to have there.
And then one other question that one of the speakers brought up that, that got me thinking is, how does this amendment and zone change help affordable housing? Is there money that the city's getting for construction or purchase? And if it's not, if that's not true, that's fine, I don't.
Well, we have a speaker here from CDA who can tell you how the transaction worked between the Housing Authority and the city for that. And she's here, so.
Okay, great.
She would like to talk.
Good evening, Evening Commissioners. My name is Sylvia Vasquez. I'm with the Community Development Agency. I'm an analyst and I oversee the Community Development Block Grant Programs. Your question is in reference to the funding. This zone change wouldn't really affect the funding because the city has already acquired the sites through the Community Development Block Grants. We did that with Community Development Block Grants and the proceeds then went into a housing fund to later develop affordable housing.
Okay, got it, got it. Thank you, thank you. This last question, how close is, as the bird flies, is this, or the crow flies, sorry, again, these, you've missed a next step, the, the park to Centennial, so that proposed, the two parcels to Centennial?
As the crow flies, pretty darn close.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I don't know.
Yeah.
However, I, I do have to say, it's a different type of par, I mean, it's a smaller parcel is going to be a different type of park. Centennial Park is really a regional park.
I guess that would depend on what the, if this ends up being a skate park, a soccer park, a walking park.
Well, on one, you might, Ron might be able to address the type of park that you could fit on 1.6 acres.
Right, okay, be great.
The Parks and Recreation Agency is planning to do outreach meetings with the community, approximately three outreach meetings. The first one is to get ideas on what the community would like to have in the park site. So we'll probably have a blank sheet of paper and get input and jot them all down and, and once that's happened, we'll go back to the drawing board, we'll do a couple of sketches on what the community has requested, we'll present that, get their approval and once, and they may tweak it a little bit at the second meeting, and at the third meeting, we'll finalize it. So it'll be all through a community input process. You know, skate park will probably come up, soccer fields will probably come up, playground equipment probably come up, but we'll have to go through a priority process in identifying what, what that particular park should look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. I just want to thank everybody that came out to speak today. I appreciate it. You guys took time out of your schedule to come before us and provide your input and I appreciate that. And as everybody's talked about, we're really here just to talk about the use. I know probably each of us and you and the audience are thinking, huh, what would I want to see on the site of anything? So just to be clear tonight and to emphasize what Mr. Ono said, that will be a process to design the park and really kind of put that signature of the community on it. So what's before us tonight is just simply a use, just a nice boring, do we paint that square green or do we paint it something else on our zoning map? And again, I appreciate everybody coming out and with that, I'd like to just jump ahead and make a motion to adopt a resolution approving, I'm sorry, recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution approving General Plan Amendment Number 2016 dash zero three and to recommend that they adopt an ordinance approving an amendment application Number 2016 dash zero three.
Second.
I'm not there yet, I still have questions.
That's okay, there's comment.
That's okay. So I have a motion and a second and we'll go ahead and take, Commissioner Contreras, you have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd also like to thank all the youth that came tonight. I think it's really empowering when you start young. You learn a lot about yourself and your community, so whether this becomes a park or not, be proud of yourselves that you did this. I know when I was your age, I don't know if I'd be as brave as you to walk up and speak in front of a crowd that I didn't know some folks, so congratulations to you. My comments in regards to this are that I am new to planning commission and I don't perhaps understand the ins and outs of some things. One is, I'm kind of confused, why would we zone something before we ask the community what they would be comfortable with? Because if we zone this open space now and then go to them and they say, well, that's not what we would have chosen. I took the freedom today to go walk the houses right in front of the property today before I came, because I wanted to get a feel of what was happening and what their thoughts were. A lot of people never even got the notice because they were on vacation. Some other people said absolutely no if it was a skate park. They said the noise, the attractions of what a park like of that sort would bring, they don't want that in their neighborhood. They want, some of them wanted homes to complete the location, because it's been empty for close to twenty years, as I was told. I met someone that's been living across the street for thirty years, very cute older couple. All Spanish speakers, all very proud of their community and their neighborhood, but not feeling that they are part of the process and would not like a decision like that to be made without actually having a voice before the action. So what is the typical process?
If I may, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, if I may respond, the, the Planning Commission and the City Council are, the City Council is elected on behalf of the electorate to make these important land use decisions. And the Planning Commission has been appointed by the City Council to work with staff in coming up with educated, well-understood recommendations. We cannot do a referendum of the entire community every time there is a land use change. We can never reach consensus. We have to rely on the political process and the democratic process and your expertise and the expertise of the staff that both the planning staff and other staff from other departments and divisions we bring in. The public hearing is that format for you to get input. If you were to require us to do a public outreach and a town hall meeting and take a referendum, every time we had something as clear as this land, this zone change, which is really a necessity of, by several different directions, then we would never get anything done. With all due respect, I ask you to bring in yourself as the opinionary carrier of a lot of people and then do your best fair and most fair judgment and give your best view of this by your vote. And if at any point you would like for any particular reason, if there is some zone change that is really unusual and it has a lot of controversies around it, we typically go ahead and do additional public outreach. But something has to, to us, this is actually not that complicated a zone change process. Especially when the Parks Department asks us to please change the zoning because we have these other businesses and that's consistent with council call a direction, we don't second guess it, we bring it to the public hearing, we do the normal noticing, and whatever input we get, we will collect. So while I really have a lot of empathy and a lot of understanding of your openness to have a public dialogue, that kind of public dialogue on every event is just simply something we cannot afford. Now, I'm being very honest with you.
And I, obviously I'm opening myself up to being vulnerable here, but I'm not saying that I promise to be fair and just, I'm just saying that, that was my question and, I mean, there's still going to be public hearing or meetings in the community regardless either way. So whether you have them before or after, really kind of void themselves out. Only the process that's in, in, in place right now does not allow to go back. It only allows you to go forward. So I just wanted to voice what I learned today. I completely agree that the city is devoid of open space as well as affordable housing and we have such a lack of public safety right now in terms of response that we're adding more to it, unfortunately, we know at times. One comment that was made today, and I agree, is they would be very happy if it was a family-oriented park that closed at a certain time, they feel a little more comfortable. So hopefully moving forward, I like that I hear that there are other options, that it doesn't have to just be a skate park. And I think that, that's great to have those options and that's where they will have their input. Thank you for explaining the process as I'm still learning. Thank you.
Commissioner Mendoza? Oh, excuse me.
Good.
I just want to thank the public for being here today. I want to tell you just in one minute, my personal story. I grew up on McFadden and Standard, oh, it's off. I grew up on Standard and McFadden, an area where we had drugs, gangs, and I didn't have a park. Like I said, I lived in a condominium. Luckily, I did not end up using or abusing drugs, but I do have to tell you, I have diabetes. Could have been a reason why I didn't have that open space, you know, to play. The closest park was Madison, but for a child, you know, you could imagine, my parents were never home, my mom actually, I didn't have a dad, she was always working. So I just want to say that to all the youth, you know, keep advocating for open park. I went to the area, I saw Friendship Park. Friendship Park, if you haven't been there, is only a small playground and a swing and a bench, that's it. You have to go check it out. They need something more than Friendship Park. And the area from Montevista to McFadden to Townsend, it's all apartments jammed, so they, the, the youth and the children, they need this space to play. So thank you all for being here and for your comments.
Again, thanks to everyone for coming out, those that wanted to lend some caution to making a decision like this and as well as those that were in favor of, of green space. I mean, it's, it's a necessity that we have to continue to look at. I'm also looking at it from the standpoint, having been a trustee for Rancho, and this actual activity, this actual item came up, you know, in front of our board, I mean, it is a challenge to, the, the education center, one of the things that we, you know, Rancho does, Rancho has very few, if any, education centers in Santa Ana, outside of Santa Ana College, and it just has Centennial. And to go back to what I think you were saying earlier, Hassan, I mean, if you would ask people today if they wanted to have Centennial Education Center down in Centennial Park, you will get mixed answers. You will get people saying, no, I'd rather see it as a green space. So there, there's going to be always some contention one way or another. But at the end of the day, doing this proposition, I think it's a win-win for, for both the city and the, and the youth in the city, as well as it's a win-win for Rancho to be able to continue to provide, continuing education to the constituents in the community in the south end of the city, because again, it's the only, it's the only location outside of Santa Ana College that's used for education. I think we need to continue to have opportunities, educational opportunities throughout the city, and this is just one way of doing that and continuing. It also allow, if the district is able to do what they want to do, it'll allow them to go from what's known as bungalows or, or, you know, temporary housing to potentially permanent housing for an education center there, so I think it's a good thing.
Commissioner, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, as, as much as I'm happy to see all of you out tonight, this is not the last stop. As Mr. Higanyan mentioned, we're here to make a recommendation to the City Council on purely the zone change and the general plan amendment. So I would encourage you to come out and I would just, for, for those that are concerned about public outreach, I think, one, our staff does an excellent job in, you know, flattering folks, reaching out to certain neighborhood associations to, to get input. And I, I heard one gentleman today who came here on behalf of one of those neighborhood associations near the site. So I think, you know, today was a great example of it. Our last hearing on this that we continued, we didn't have anybody. So I think today going forward, I feel much more confident supporting the park because, or supporting the zone change for a park at some point because we've had the input of the community. So again, I want to thank you, but I feel much more confident with you out here giving us your input. And again, thank you staff for, again, we wouldn't have these folks out here if you hadn't done your outreach, so thank you.
Thank you. I just, before I call for the roll call, I also want to thank everyone for coming out. I am an advocate for both housing and open space because we need both of them in Santa Ana, as you're all aware. So it, it's a tough call, you know, should you put houses or should you put a park? But I think we're in a place, and I appreciate Mr. Ron Ono for coming out and explaining the history of where we've come, how we had many, you know, six parcels and how we looked at them and how we have a requirements that need to be met on the national level. And I think that it's come down to, this is one of the biggest parcels that's available for open space and it meets the qualifications and it just fits. And I believe if there was somewhere else that would have done better, I'm sure that that would be the recommendation, but it, there isn't. And I know that all of you coming out here is going to make a tremendous impact on how those meetings go when we meet with the, when the city staff meet with the public to talk about what kind of park it is. Many of you will be at the front door there telling them what it is you expect to, the park to have, or what the needs are, or does it need to be locked, or they're ours, do we need to have police patrols, do we, you know, do we need to have, you know, play equipment or, or whatever, whatever the needs are. I know you'll all be there, so I, you know, recommend that you keep that on your radar because, because that will happen. But I, I believe that on this project, that this is going to be a win-win for everyone. We just need to get this part of the process done so we can get on to the next part. And again, I appreciate you coming out and bearing through and being patient with us through this. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Contreras Leo opposing. Okay, and motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
At this point, we are going to end the business calendar and we're going to move on to our work-study session. The study session is being continued. We had a staff family emergency.
We had a staff-family emergency, and so we're going to continue it until February. Thank you.
Continue that until the next meeting, or we're just going to TBD?
Let's just, we'll just schedule it as we go. It's not a public hearing, so we don't have to worry about noticing.
Sounds good. Okay, so that's going to be continued, and then I have excuse absences, which I don't think we need since everyone's here.
No.
So, we move on to planning manager updates?
Yes, I'd like to introduce to you our brand-new, as of today, Planning Commission Secretary, Sarah Bernal. She comes to us from the Community Development Agency. We stole her. We only steal the best, as Hassan would say, and we're, we welcome her, and we're really, really, really glad to have her here tonight, so. The other issue on the general plan status update, I just wanted to give you, we've completed our public, our, excuse me, our recruit, our RFP process, so we are looking at consultants to help us on technical studies with the general plan update, and we will be conducting our first general plan advisory group meeting the first week in February. In addition to that, I'm really excited about the number of attendings that we are going to have at the Planning Commission Academy. Thank you very much for all of you that signed up. We really appreciate that, and I think you will truly, as Commissioner Alderati said at, Alderetti said at the last meeting, he really got a lot out of it, and I think you will as well. So, that said, that's all that I have to say tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. We're going to move on to planning commissioner comments, and I'll start with Commissioner one. Commissioner Mendoza?
Just want to welcome Ms. Bernal, so it's going to be fun.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
No comments, welcome.
Commissioner Alder?
No comments.
Commissioner Contreras Lio? Commissioner Ms. Sarah?
Other than welcome, no other comments.
And just welcome Sarah. Thanks, Sarah. Hopefully, we'll get you all ready and ready.
Rosa is a very good teacher and mentor. And with that, we're going to.
All of my life.
With that, we're adjourning.
Thank you.